Ready? Welcome, everyone, to the Town of Brookfield Select Board Meeting, Thursday, August 29, 2024. This meeting is being recorded. Reminder, the state primary election is set for Tuesday, September 3rd. Polling hours are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Town Hall. Warrants. Wants to... Oh, jeez. Please stand and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Wants to read. Do you want to read the warrants? Ron?
Sure. Okay, for our warrants, we have warrant FY25-04, accounts payable in the amount of $131,366.18. For warrant fiscal year 2504 payroll, the amount is $165,944.83. And lastly, for fiscal year 25-04 withholding in the amount of $74,939.58.
All right, thank you. And item number one on the agenda, Town Hall office closures on election days. Resign vote 22924 and pack it. So back on 229, we made it so the Town Hall offices weren't so much closed, but employees had the option to work from home on those days. And now we're... The discussion is to whether we want to keep that or remove that.
Well, I asked to put it on, so I'll start. It was my thought that most people were working from home, but the bulk of them wouldn't need to work from home. It's my understanding Lori, the accountant, as well as the treasurer, are both coming in, and their offices are not interfering with the election. And speaking with the tax collector, she said she could do either way, but she has a door to her office that wouldn't be affected by the election. In talking to the town clerk, he said that as long as people are not in the main hall, he didn't have a problem with it. So I thought, in all fairness, that we should open it up. The only issue that I could find is the assessors' office.
So we actually talked about this at the department head meeting, and that Mike really kind of took charge on that and said the only two issues are just tax collector and Patty.
Yeah. But in speaking to the tax collector, there's also the side door to her office that could access the exterior of the building. So really, the only one would be the assessors' office that I would say would not really be able to come in and function in her office.
And I don't know what we... If we... And if anything was really made concrete, but the only issue with Patty that came up is she doesn't really have an option to work from home either.
She also has a lot of flexibility with her hours, and we talked about just closing the office for the day and swapping it day out. So she has that flexibility, so.
Okay.
That's the only office that I see would be a problem affecting the election.
One of the other things we had discussed at the department heads meeting is, in essence, this is really kind of a pilot run for this, is I think everyone can agree that the presidential election is going to... You're going to see far more traffic. So if we find... If we can find a solution that works and accommodates the work schedules as well as the election and voters' traffic flow, I think we'll have a home run for the presidential election is where it's really going to come in handy.
Yeah, I think the bigger... The bigger problem for the presidential election, frankly, is almost more the parking than it is the office traffic. So because if you've got everybody in the building, they use up all the parking spots along the back of the building plus some of the front, and then voters wind up with, you know, kind of a hike-in.
Right. Right.
So... But from an office traffic perspective, I mean, the other piece of it is that... And this is mostly an unrelated topic, but it's something to consider in having the office open. We've had one of the... I don't remember what it was. The individuals that quote-unquote "audit your elections."
First Amendment auditor.
And the more first amendment audits, right? And so the more people you have in the building, the more opportunity you have for something to go south. So if we are not going to close, we need to make a conscious effort to ensure everybody receives appropriate training relative to engagement with the public in those first amendment audits.
Which they did have the training.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm saying active refresher as well as just...
But not only did they have the training, but now we're also aware on the rules of that auditor that he can be made to stay in one particular area rather than float freely through the building like he did the first go-around. So I think we're a lot wiser to that now, and I think that discussing it with Mike, he's going to have a limited area. And if there's multiple auditors, they're going to have a limited area. They're not allowed to float freely through the building. So we can designate that.
Yeah. And additionally, once again, at the department head meeting, Brad and I reemphasize that. And for employees that will be working at Town Hall, if there is a first amendment auditor, the employees were instructed to tell the auditor to wait for either myself or Mike, and we would address any questions or concerns that they might have. So we're basically trying to get the town employees away from the auditors, let myself and Mike take care of it so that they can perform their duties and responsibilities. And Mike and I can hopefully control the first amendment auditors so that they can do what is their right to do, but also in a contained and managed process.
Exactly.
I frankly don't care one way or the other, whether we're open or not.
Yeah, I don't work at the Town Hall, so it doesn't...
I mean, were the department heads comfortable with it then? Because I wasn't at the meeting, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, if the department heads don't have any heartburn with it, I'll make a motion for us to rescind the vote of 22924.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Recreation Committee appointment, Alex Olson.
I'll make a motion to appoint Alex Olson to the Rec Committee.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is...
Alternate.
Your motion for Troy Allen as the alternate for the primary inspector?
Yep.
So... All right. I'll wait for discussion. If you want to make the motion, or I'll make the motion.
Yeah, she made the motion. One second. Discussion?
Yeah. So how does it work, Troy? Who's the... So do you do much work in town?
A little bit. I wouldn't say a lot.
Okay. So then the primary inspector will do your inspections.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay. Well, thank you for applying for the position. So that's it for me.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Good to go.
All right. Americans with Disabilities Act ADA request for accommodations. Impact it.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I can kind of...
Yep.
Brief, if you will, the discussions that I've had with... Around that. As the board's aware, approximately two weeks or so ago, the board received an ADA request for reasonable accommodations from Mr. Kelleher. And in the request, he had indicated he was unable to participate in town government due to alleged harassment, which had negative effects upon his mental and physical health. He was unable to enter Town Hall without experiencing distress and concern for his safety. Once again, these are in his request. And he was requesting reasonable accommodations under ADA in order to participate in the following boards and committees: the Conservation Committee, the Planning Board, the Board of Health, the Personnel Board, the Board of Assessors, and the Advisory Committee. So upon receiving the request, I conferred with Town Council, Michelle Rendazzo, and determined with regards to the reasonable accommodations, there were really a few options that the board should consider and discuss. First one was to video and audio record all of the reference committee and board meetings that occur at Town Hall, because Town Hall was specific in the request. And once we have those recordings to update... Or excuse me, upload those recordings to the Brookfields Community Media website within three business days. So if we consider that option one, if you will. Option two would be live streaming all the reference committee and board meetings that occur at Town Hall. That is something that we're currently starting to do. I believe we're only doing that for select board meetings at this point. So that is an option. Option three is to conduct what I'll refer to as interactive meetings via MS Teams or Zoom, go-to-meeting, those types of things. Once again, that occur at Town Hall for those committees. And then there's a fourth option, which is to provide onsite police presence or detail for all those committees... Committee meetings at Town Hall. My recommendation is there's pros and cons for each of those options. Lot of them have to do with technology and the utilization of technology. Personally, I think it's a good idea maybe for the board to invite Jacob in so he can discuss the actual details, those pros and cons of some of those technology-related options. And then obviously, for the fourth option with police, we'd certainly want to talk to Chief Blanchard to get his input.
Yeah. And from what... Another little piece of background, regardless of this, is from the state, it's probably a matter of time before we're going to be having to be adopting hybrid Zoom meetings anyways.
Correct. Yeah, there is pending legislation out there for Zoom-type meetings. It seems to have... It certainly hasn't passed yet. I think it is still in subcommittee, but there seems to be a momentum growing behind it. So I agree. It sounds like it's probably a matter of time before it comes our way.
And really, the challenge right now is that a lot of our committee members aren't necessarily technologically literate, but if we can find a way to make it relatively easy for them, then, you know...
I told Jake I'd volunteer, as crazy as it sounds, to help people with that.
Help people with that?
Jake, we have that on recording.
Or come and hang out at the meetings and run it along?
Well, I would make a motion that until we can do that, that we ask Mr. Kelleher to call the police department, and if they don't have anything going on, they accompany to the building. And if they have to leave for a call, then they can leave for a call. But like this evening, there's two police officers on that if there's not a call, they could sit with him at the Town Hall to ensure his safety.
Do we want to take the question? Yeah.
Hold on, because we're going to allow two minutes for someone to speak.
Yeah.
On one time.
Hold on.
You don't want to break your timer, and that would be less than two minutes.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
So I just wanted to make it abundantly clear that my accommodation request was never for a police presence. I made the request, I believe, in the order of live streaming first, and then if that couldn't be done, then video and then upload later. And then the very bare minimum, just use a tape recorder, like a digital recorder, because I think plenty more does, and just the audio, the audio recording, no video. And that would be divided by three days. I tried to make it as very easy for the town as possible to tie up police resources. That's something I never even asked for. That did not come from my side of the table. I don't.
That's correct. That was from Town Council as they were lining up all the possibilities to satisfy a reasonable accommodation.
But my problem is, he stated that he was... Didn't feel safe. And felt like he was harassed. So to accommodate that, if the police aren't... They don't have a call, then I'm more than willing to let them accompany Mr. Kelleher to the Town Hall or to be in a police station here when we're having a meeting. He's the one that stated that he didn't feel safe, right?
Yeah.
So I think when someone makes that claim, I think we need to accommodate it.
But I think back to Ron's point, maybe we should discuss that with Chief Blanchard, because I've talked to a couple of the officers, and they're not too keen on it.
Yeah. So they're not... They're probably not fans. And the other challenge with that, right, is that I think you set up a dynamic there. While, yes, it's to ensure everybody's safety, one, it's unpredictable because if they have a significant call, right, they're going to be obligated to leave.
Absolutely.
Unless we start staffing in such a manner that ensures enough coverage on those nights to guarantee that somebody can be at the Town Hall, right?
But the fact reasonable accommodation is just that, right? So if they get a call, they have to leave, absolutely. But that's a reasonable accommodation.
Right. But the flip side of that, right, since it's...
And I'm just saying on the short term, not the long term.
Can I finish my sentence? Thank you. Of course, now I don't even remember where I was going with that. I think the other piece of it to consider is the social dynamic when we're talking about both physical safety and, I would say, social anxiety-type things. Having a police officer looming over you when there's two divergent groups or parties or tension doesn't necessarily address some aspects of the request for the accommodation. Now I'm done. It's your turn.
So the fact that... The wording in here is concerning to me, right? So... Until we can get the accommodations set up and train the people with computer technology and Zoom and different things, then I just think it's a reasonable thing to do regarding the statements that have been made in his letter, right? So we want this individual to feel safe and to be able to come to the meetings. However, it's been my observation in most of the interactions that Mr. Kelleher was the one that was yelling and screaming and having the police call. That's been my observation. So... But I think in... And there are those events, the police were called there anyway to settle it down. So... Until we can get that videographer equipment set up, I just feel strong that we should make sure that Mr. Kelleher feels safe attending anytime he wants to be in the Town Hall or police station.
And actually, one other point that's probably germane is, and I did confirm with Town Council, there is no timeline or deadline, if you will, with regards to the reasonable accommodations. So it's not as if we have 15 days or 30 days in which to implement something. Basically, we have to be progressing towards implementing something.
Do we want to, Jake, come up to talk about how quick he could even get anything up and going?
Even if it was just the audio, because, right? Because just recording the audio is an option, and it's a pretty low-tech requirement, right? I mean, we could get a... Probably a $50, like, MP3 recorder and just dump it. I mean, that's...
Do you want to come up and talk about it?
Talk about it, right? I mean, but that's like...
Do you want me to show how to use it?
A phonogram?
Yeah, I mean, not for nothing. Those aren't hard.
Yeah. So I think for audio only, that's no problem. We can get some sort of device that's just to, you know, record, play, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
And then that tape can be left somewhere, like maybe in the cable access mailbox, and I could just upload that, you know, to the website periodically. So I think that might be like the most lo-fi kind of solution.
Yeah. I mean, that's the sort of thing we could probably send somebody to the store and have it in place Tuesday.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. I can set that up for you guys, too, like tomorrow, so.
Okay.
That's not hard. The bigger... Kind of the bigger project would be to have Zoom, maybe?
Yep.
If that's something that the state's going to require at some point. We could set up a similar setup to what we have in the Town Administrator's Office with like a display and a soundbar kind of thing.
Nice.
We can do it with a much bigger screen, which we're going to need in there anyway for the studio project.
Great.
So, yeah, we could do that under the studio project, part of it, and then the Zoom component we could do through IT or something.
Okay.
Question about the Zoom thing.
Sure.
And I wanted to try to get you before this meeting, but I couldn't. Is that going to be automatically recorded? And how are we going to house that data? Does that have to be recorded? Do we know?
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Yeah.
Requirement.
I could check. I could research it.
So, I mean, most of your paid Zoom accounts...
Right.
They automatically load to your cloud space associated with Zoom, and then it would just be a case of publishing it.
Making sure we have enough of the... Enough of it.
Yeah. And I should mention also, we have Teams at Town Hall. Yeah, so and we have 500 terabytes of storage, so we should...
Probably use that.
Yeah, we'll be okay.
Yeah, I think that'll keep us out of trouble for a bit.
I realize, I think I was saying Zoom, too, but there's no need for it to specifically be Zoom. Yeah. In fact, we set up, and I don't know if it worked, but I know that it was set up for a meeting yesterday, a Zoom call from here, too. So I think our Teams did it again, Teams call. So but I think it went okay. I don't know if it went okay, but okay. So I don't know if it went okay, but...
Well, the aspects of it that did not go okay were unrelated to the technology portion of the program.
All right.
Well said.
I've done my part, then. But so, you know, we can set something else up like that. I think long-term, we may not be using this room as much. And I think a significant part of the issue for recording in this space is the internet connectivity.
Is there any way to use the Ethernet?
They tried. They have it pretty locked down.
Ah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we not live on YouTube right now?
We are off and on. It's... Yeah, I did the best I could to try to piggyback the signal, but...
Could we... I know they use a different person for their IT in this building, but it doesn't seem like it ought to be hard for them to set up a guest.
Yeah, I'll talk to Chief Blanchard and see if we can coordinate with CM Geeks and get permission, at least for one of those ports with that device, get access to it.
Why is... Why do we have two different ITs?
That's a really good question, right? It... There's a long history behind it that I didn't necessarily concur with, but it goes... It dates back to when the IT people for the town were very deeply embedded with some of the members of town government.
Yeah.
And it was a different one-person show that was less agnostic and little less credible relative to access to the police drives and documentation. I think the chief has always been more comfortable having somebody that's more of a corporation for...
So should we have Ron talk to Chief Blanchard to see about consolidating that?
Yeah. I think we're at a point where we could consider doing that, but if he's still uncomfortable, then at a very minimum, he needs to facilitate interactions.
Yeah, I could check with the chief with regards to length of contract and things along those lines.
Yeah, and from my side, I do have partners in a team, so.
Yes.
If that's the concern, we could bid. We would be comparable, I think, in terms of scale and scope.
Yep. But, yeah, I think what we do is we start with the audio, and then that way, you know, we've at least got that, so.
And we can even secure a couple of those devices so that if we had meetings running at the same time, you know, they could...
Yeah, the chief.
Yeah, they're not a big deal, so we can do that. And then just the time to upload them, you know, only probably a few days just to put them online. But I think we have, what, 70? The process was 72 hours or something, or three business days?
Yeah, three business days.
No problem. We can get them up before then.
That's all I have.
So I believe you didn't... Did you make a motion?
Yes.
I believe it was a motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't get seconded, so.
I can second it for the discussion purposes, unless we want to make another motion.
Yeah, I just don't think the policing option after talking to the police is going to be an option.
I don't see...
All right. Yeah, second, and then for discussion.
It doesn't seem like it's a long-ended thing. It seems like it's going to be short-term. I think this covers us with liability going forward. If we had that, and I... I'm not the one that made the statements, he didn't feel safe. He made the statements. And I think we're duly obligated to make sure that he's safe. And I think that's one way to take care of it right away.
No, I'm of the opinion... You are done, right?
Yes.
I'm done.
No.
I'm of the opinion that... To me, I think that may perpetuate the opportunities for conflict. However, I think it's a good option to have. I think what we do is we focus our efforts on offering the technology solutions with the understanding that if Mr. Kelleher does want to attend something in person, that he has the option to contact the police and find out if somebody is available, and he can choose to go or not go. But that doesn't necessarily alleviate us of looking at the technology as the primary method of solution, right?
No, I agree with that, because mine was for the short term.
Yeah. So my thought is fairly immediate action as soon as it's reasonable, next like three or four days, working days, right? And if you over-deliver and it's tomorrow, that's great, but it doesn't have to be, right? We get the audio devices, get them available to people, and, you know, a little card that says, here's how you use it, hit the record button, right? Please drop it back in my box, right? Get that in place. And then... But I think, you know, to your point, if we've got to go to Teams, let's also start the process of getting that set up.
How soon? I mean, I think you could do that almost within a couple of days, no?
Yeah, so in terms of the Teams, it's already set up.
Right.
I'd set it up for you guys.
But would they have... Would they have to have a town email, though? Because I don't believe all...
We could set it up with... Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah.
We could set it up with like a generic email for just recording meetings.
Okay.
Then that would work.
So I think then what... One of the things we can start to do is look at the fidelity of that, and if there's times when, you know, Jacob has a conflict or something, or we can't get somebody on-site to record, if that works, we can hold it as a hybrid meeting, and that also winds up being our recording, right? So it's kind of a win-win all the way around.
Yeah. I think the biggest thing with the recordings, you're talking like Zoom or Teams recordings,
Yeah.
would be the fidelity for rebroadcast purposes, but, you know...
Oh, trust me, I'm not saying that we want to get out of the habit of truly video recording. I'm just saying we can make them available.
Right. And in terms of time commitment, it would be difficult for me to be at every single meeting that's held, but I can make an effort to be, you know, ones that are with enough advance warning that are like particularly important if we wanted the higher quality recordings, okay?
Great.
The only other thing, unless you know the rules, I believe there are rules around hybrid meetings, like if we did it on Teams, like...
There would still have to be a quorum pressing in the building. Well, actually...
No, no, no. What I'm talking about is like, what if someone is getting unruly on a Teams meeting? Or there's one of the people that's on the Teams meeting... No, 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 what I'm talking about is like, what if someone is getting unruly on a Teams meeting, or there's, one of the people that's on the Teams meeting is making too much noise? What are the rules that you can mute them or shoot them out and?
It would, in essence, really be the same rules as if someone was actually sitting.
Right.
So, if they're being unruly, obviously, yes, you can, you can mute them.
Yeah.
In fact, in my previous life, we did have interactive GoToMeetings was the software that we utilized. And at the beginning of each meeting, the chairman, we make a statement, make sure you're on mute.
Yeah.
And on the, on the monitor, you could actually see who was muted, and if someone wasn't muted, chairman would usually just mute, mute them manually, so.
Yeah, and all of those.
The technology is there to.
And they, and they all have a raise your hand capability, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah, Teams can, you can, we can make somebody a moderator, you can make multiple people moderators, so.
So I guess back. Motion was made, second.
Seconded.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, hold on, I tell you what, let me, can I, can I put an amendment, let me put in, before we vote that, can I put in an amendment?
Sure. Sure.
So, I'd like to amend the motion to be that we'll at least verify with the chief availability of police officers for, on request, to attend one of these meetings with twenty-four hours' notice?
Okay.
I guess, I guess my problem with that is if, if the police officers are not doing anything, then he should be able to make the call to have them attend. Full well knowing that if they get a call, they'll have to leave. And again, this is the extreme short-term, as quick as Jacob can get something going for us, and we get the computers set up so that it can happen and accommodate him, then I'm, I'm good with that. But, but I strongly feel he should be able to call the police department, say, hey, I'm going to this meeting on this date, and I think twenty-four hours is a reasonable timeframe. But I don't think it's ask the police chief, I think we need to instruct the police chief that this is gonna happen on the short-term, and if the officers are available, then that needs to happen. And if there's no one available, then we can't make that reasonable accommodation, but we are moving forward rapidly and quickly to accommodate it through the means of tape recording, Zoom, Teams, all the different things to make sure that this is only the short-term.
Yeah.
But when you read his letter, I mean, it sounds horrific, right? So, if we don't act and do something, then I feel that, feel like there's liability on the town, right? So, even though he say, stated verbally tonight something different, that's not what the letter says, that's multiple pages long.
So I guess I could say is, I'll go for it, only because I think he's gonna be able to get the technology up and going before the next meeting.
Perfect, yeah, and that's, and that's hopeful that that will happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for clarity, do we, do we want like some sort of a Zoom setup beyond a laptop, or just a laptop at this point, or do we know?
So I think it's.
I was gonna say, can we get that TV from Ron's office down? Just so people in the audience can see who's on the Zoom?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we could, we can move it down the stairs?
Yeah, I guess we, we could, I mean.
Physically, yeah.
You're, you're probably asking for it to, to be dropped at one point.
Does it make?
No one wanna do that as a long-term solution.
Does it make sense for us to purchase a smaller laptop that's used and shared by all the boards and committees?
Yeah, so I guess that's my question, do we want, yeah, do we wanna move the one from Ron's office, do we wanna get a laptop, or do we want a bigger one for down in that, that room?
We're asking for trouble transporting that.
Well, yeah, I mean, what kind of budget do we have relative to technology, what if we wind up voting at town meeting?
I don't, I don't, I know there were some warrant articles on there, and we have wiggle room in some of those.
Yeah.
We, we, we could do base, I feel reasonably confident we could do whichever solution you think is best, and we would be okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, it would be nice to have a screen at, you know, adequate to, that people in the room could also be aware of who's online, right? I mean, that would be probably my preference, since we'd be doing the and honestly, if it's set, the Teams setup hypothetically, right, if we've got anybody on those boards that has their own laptop, they could log into their Teams account, you know, from, from a, from a personal device until we get the, the screen and the official camera in place, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And what would that be, like a couple, maybe a couple of weeks to get that into the bank at all?
Um, to get a, like a, like a display unit with a screen and everything.
Yeah.
Obviously, this isn't, this is important, so we, you know, we could expedite it, we could do it within probably a week.
Okay.
Labor day sale this weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, time is good, right? So, best spies are best friends, right?
Yeah, we don't have to wait for tax-free weekend with you guys, so.
Nope, nope, we don't, so.
And I would strongly recommend, once again, from my, my previous life, the larger the monitor, the much easier it's gonna be, one, not only for viewing, but also for, I guess, monitoring by the chairman, 'cause, you know, it's more likely it's gonna be quite a distance away, and if you have a lot of people, those boxes can get pretty small. It'll be hard to determine who is not muted.
Right, and I mean, this is something that I was gonna wanna bring up anyways, 'cause heading into budget seizing and having that capability to show the, the audience what's going on with the budget.
That'd be great.
Live would be great.
Yeah.
And, and I'll say that the, the, the screen is covered under the studio project.
Right.
'Cause we need that in there anyway.
Right.
So, it's really just.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, we just accelerate that piece of it, right?
Yeah.
That's from PEG.
Correct, well, from a grant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, all right, yeah, thanks.
So Patty was pointing to this monitor here, but I, I think that would be difficult, right, 'cause if, we're talking more of the setup at the town hall, we very infrequently need to.
Well, those are connected to a laptop, is, is how you connect them, so if, you know, you could, any laptop, that's how they work. So you have the screen, so that's how you would do it, you have one at the town hall, and you have one here. So you have the technology in both places where you could utilize that, and that way, you're not buying this big huge monitor and, and worrying about bringing it from one location to another. If you utilize that, you're only taking laptop and connecting it right through there, and you've got the technology already in place to be able to, for people to view. So that might be an option to try and save the town money.
I'm gonna defer to.
Well, the problem is, I don't think technology-wise, we can hook up to that right now, 'cause we're on different IT, and we don't have the ability to get into that.
Um, sorry.
Yeah.
They can't hear me. So you actually, interestingly, I, I looked at that while I was here, and we can, can actually hook into that without any having to go through IT here.
Okay.
So, but only obviously in this room.
Right.
If we wanted to do it over there, we'd need a projector over there, and then a screen, and there'd be some other things.
It's probably a similar cost to set this up compared to. Right, those are pretty expensive.
Right now, monitors have come down so far.
Yeah, TVs are cheap.
Yeah, I know.
Well, one of the things I also wanna bring to your attention, if you look at the way the room is set up, that projection would be behind you all, and actually, Rich and Beth would probably be a, a shadow against that.
We'd have to reorganize.
So, yeah, you'd have to reconfigure the room.
Or a short throw, a short throw, I actually, they're, they're pretty amazing, they can, they can be like right on top of the screen and still project onto the screen. So they're almost like a TV in fidelity, and you can get up to probably a hundred and forty-inch, so they're significantly bigger screens.
So it's my recommendation, you, you do what's best for us, right? Whether we utilize this here, and we utilize something different at the town hall, but we're gonna leave that up to you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Jacob.
All right. Discuss complaint regarding town employee official impact, Ron?
Uh, yep, I can brief you guys on that as well. As you're aware, we did receive a complaint against a former employee and current town official from Mr. Callaher that was dated back on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, regarding the alleged misconduct and financial improprieties of a former employee and current town official. The alleged misconduct and financial improprieties are in regards to the purchase of safety jackets for the Conservation Commission. And it actually dated back to the spring of twenty twenty-three, and there was a whole litany of, I guess, continued activity, bring it up to more current date. But the origins were back in the spring of twenty twenty-three. Specifically, the alleged financial improprieties, improprieties are in regards to financial reimbursement for the purchasing surrounding those safety jackets. As a result of the complaint, Select Board Chair Mr. Kudelski asked me to look into the accusations. I did discuss the, the matter in decent amount of detail with the former employee and current town official, as well as the town accountant, Ms. Bartkus, who was mentioned prominently in the, in the complaint. The former employee and town official vehemently denied any and all accusations levied against her in the complaint. My subsequent discussion with Ms. Bartkus, she had indicated she never recalled receiving a voucher for reimbursement from the former employee and town official. She also was adamant that the former employee and current town official never received any reimbursement, reimbursement, not one penny from the town for the safety jackets or purchase related to that. So based upon that, my findings regarding the complaint are whether or not the former employee town, current town official ever agreed to the purchase of safety jackets for the Conservation Commission is really immaterial. Reason being is this task is not included in the job description that was formally held by this person, nor was it an inherent duty for that person when they were employed by the town. Additionally, the, the task is not included in the regular responsibilities for the position that they currently hold. As a result, I see no reason to discipline the former employee or current town official on that, on that particular matter in the complaint. Additionally, I found no evidence of any financial improprieties, or even an attempt at a financial impropriety on the part of the former employee and current town official. Additionally, the statements of the town accountant support the former employee and town official assertions that the complaint was unfounded. And once again, as a result of this, I see no reason for discipline of the former employee and town official.
So the only thing, the other thing I looked into when looking at this is, 'cause I'm under the impression that the Conservation Commission's looking to buy something, the vests, I've talked to police, fire, and town highway, they all have vests. So I think, I don't think there's a need to even buy the vests in general, because we have them readily accessible in three different locations if people want them for a site visit.
And to piggyback on top of that, in discussing this matter with the town accountant, she indicated she never would have approved a voucher for that because the source would have been the wetlands funds, and she said that's not a legal use of the, of the wetland funds, so it would have been rejected in that regard. So I guess that lends that much more credibility to, unless the Conservation Commission has a fairly large expense account, which I don't believe they do, it makes sense that if there's our safety concerns to borrow.
They coordinate with one of those departments to get ahold of them when they do a site visit.
Exactly.
Anything else?
Well, I wanna make a statement regarding this employee, she has done a good job anytime I've witnessed any of the interactions. She is now on several of the committees in town. She's extremely diligent, highly intelligent, does everything she's asked, never had a problem, and I I can't imagine this letter was even written, it's not worth the paper it was written on, in my opinion.
All right. Item number six.
I have a question on this topic.
Sure.
Right, mate? How many pages was this complaint? No, a letter?
Does anyone know if him?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
That sounds about right, yeah, it was very, very, very long, yes.
Do you have the documents attached to yours, because I emailed them?
No, I have.
Right.
Fran has them all, yeah.
Yeah, and I have it in email, yeah.
Could I get a copy of that after the meeting?
Yeah, I would say once, yeah, once, yeah, once we, the minutes.
I know you have a copy machine in here, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How much time did each one of you spend on this talk? On this letter of complaint with the forty-six page complaint? It was unfounded, how much time did you spend?
I personally have not spent much time, I breeze through the bulk of it, and just immediately, my opinion of it was it was nothing to be founded at all. No, no credibility to it. But, but my personally, so, but as far as Ron, and I, I would suggest it'd probably be quite a bit of time.
Yeah, there, there was hours, hours spent investigating, talking to the parties involved, getting, retrieving documents and evidence along those lines. It, it was, if the question was, was it taken seriously, yes, it was.
No, that wasn't the question, the question was is that it was unfounded, and it was a waste of time, and that something should be done regarding the letter, a forty-six page letter that someone sent in of unfounded accusations for the person who sent it in.
I don't think you can really prohibit that, complaints are complaints.
Well, so you, so the problem is, is that there's, there's no way with all the substantiation that was attached, while you may be making a determination not to take action, because in any discussion or observation, there can be two sides to the story. The forty-six pages did include what could be construed by a reasonable person to indicate that it was indeed a substantive complaint?
A reasonable person wouldn't have written forty-six pages, that's a fact, number one. Number two, it, it, it shows that somebody continues to cry wolf, and no one is doing anything about it.
Two minutes yet.
And you know what, your attitude is horrible to just pacify it, because that's what you just did by saying that. You can't pacify someone, someone's behavior that is crying out for help, or is just here to cause trouble. I'm not here to cause trouble, I'm here to explain to you that there is an issue here, because it's not the first time this person has put a complaint in that has been unfounded. But you're continuing to allow it to take up the time of this town.
Well.
And you need to do something about that.
All right.
Yeah, I, I just, can I just respond?
Yeah.
Quickly, I, I, I don't think there's any way we could stop someone from putting a letter of complaint in, right? I agree, where does it become harassment versus legitimate? I don't know if we're at that threshold yet, but for now, we're just gonna, for lack of a better word, we're saying we're gonna kick the can down the road. We, the town administrator has looked into it, he's done all the due diligence, and we have no finding at this time, so. That's all.
But that, that, that time is coming, that it's harassment.
I think the way our policy is written is we're not supposed to do that, and forth, and it's supposed to be clear.
Correct.
So I just need to clarify some facts, the complaint itself is not forty-six pages, the complaint itself, I believe, is either eight or nine pages, and the remaining of the pages is.
Supporting material.
Supporting, supporting the complaint, like copies of texts, copies of the Amazon pages, I think it's like nine pages of just the Amazon product itself. Copies of emails, copies of meeting minutes, copies of agendas, so that would be there, that the time to the board would spend researching this would have been limited. This took me a week, you want to talk about the time, it took me a week to get done. And yes, fine, the town finds no finding on the financial, but there is no question that the commission was giving different information at different times, I provided you with those YouTube links, and now maybe that's not, that's not a violation under the, the account. And now maybe that's not, that's not a violation under the, the accounting and the financials. But it's, it's clear as day when you say, you know, I did this and then months later you say, no, I didn't. You know, I'm gonna do this. I ordered it. I didn't order it. I'm not gonna order it. I did order it. I don't have the order. Your order was placed. It wasn't placed. That's factual. Um, and if, if, it, it, it cheers me up inside because the person I made the claim by, I, I held them in, in regard. So. It's unfortunate. It really is. It's not, it's not like I want to sit here and write a complaint. I really don't. But when I, when I go to, when I see that conservation commission like you're saying that they're gonna do best and someone says, oh, I'm not gonna order them because they were eighty dollars a piece and absolutely not. And I was told multiple times, multiple times on local different platforms, yeah, they're ordered, they're at my house. I'm, I'm not gonna break them down, whatever, whatever, whatever. I saw that as probably just looked, uh, part of the seriousness of the complaint. So.
Okay.
I gotta, one, may I speak?
Okay.
Why, why, um, why was this not resolved at the com, commission? And why was it, why are we just bringing this up now? Why is this surfaced now? Why did the chairman of the conservation didn't, why did he discuss this with the, with the member that is being accused? Why has this not been brought forward until now? I can answer if you want.
I don't know if I want to continue all the going back and forth. No.
We're not going back and forth. We're trying to.
No, I, I, I don't have an answer.
He took the time to put the complaint in.
Yeah.
So if, if, if the prior chair wants to address you, Brad, I think we're still within the confines, but then we're starting to hit everything.
Well, we're right at, it was, it was a minute and fifty-two seconds, so.
I can do it to seven seconds. The reason it's brought up now is because at the last conservation commission meeting, the jackets was brought up again. And they said that they were eighty dollars a piece when they were forty and they made the declaration that absolutely not did order them, which contradicted what we were told for almost a year. That's why it was brought up now.
Alright. Discussion upgrade of the, oh no, sorry, resignation of Personnel Board Holly Chisholm.
Do we need a motion to accept this or is it just one?
Nope. No, we just acknowledge it and with regrets.
Send her notes.
We send her a note.
Did she express anything other than personal reasons to anybody?
I have no idea.
I, I wasn't aware and I meant to seek her out and I haven't.
No, she, that's exactly what she told me, what she put in that email. She wrote a copy of that.
Um, the only thing I'd like to bring up about it, so now that creates a vacancy. I know you optioned to go on the personnel. However, I don't know if you want to.
We'd have to post it as a select board meeting. I don't want to have anything to do with that.
No. Okay.
No, because, because even if we posted as a working meeting, I guess we could. I mean, we could, but there'd be no agenda other than the personnel meeting agenda.
It would allow me to stay on for the full year rather than you cut me out at six months. So I don't see why we wouldn't, but you know, that's.
How many people do we have on right now?
Karen?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, it's in my computer. I think there's, there, there's room. I think it could, there's need five.
I, I want to say there's four on right now.
Four, yeah.
Well, let's put it on a file.
Okay.
What, next available agenda?
Uh, discussion upgrade highway department cameras.
So I reached out to Jacob the other day and he was able to send me a packet to, with some upgrades to the cameras as well as the computer system down there. I believe it's in excess of twenty years old. The, the cameras are poor grade now for the technology. It was, I didn't go through the whole thing.
I know, I know they need to be updated.
I'll forward, or I'll, I'll give the information to Ron and he can forward it to you guys. But we don't need to make a decision tonight, but I just wanted to kind of get the ball rolling so we can do some upgrades down there.
Um, I just have a question on the cameras and I guess this kind of ties into town hall. To, do we have the ability to, how do we access those videos? Because I know like with some security systems, like you can, I, I could look it up from my phone. Because like I, I've gotten calls like, why are there people at the highway department on a Sunday? And I have no idea why. And I could actually look and see what was happening.
Uh, sure. So I, I, do you want me to come up?
Sure, sure. And I guess the other part of that, are we using a vendor or is this something you're doing?
Uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm managing it for you guys. Um, so Mike Siri has access, um, and I have access. Um, it was, it was, there was a thought that, and I've seen this in other towns where if it's not, you know, if it's, an employee has access to edit and delete, uh, that there are concerns that if the videos need to be used in court or something like that, that there could be some risks. Um, and so generally I, you know, I'll manage them that way. And what I can do is I can lock the files with a hash function.
Is there, is there just a viewing only, mobile viewing only?
Yeah, so, so we, I created a, that's what I did and I had given that to Mike, uh, because he had had access to the old system. So I figured I would maintain that continuity and I ran that by, um, all of this by, you know, Ron when, when we were finishing setting up the, the system. Um, if, if we need to provide access to other people, we're, we can do that too. Yeah.
I think it's kind of a slippery slope for everyone to have access to it. I would be more in favor of just, like you say, yourself, someone else. Maybe that other person just be Brad, but I don't think that the viewing portion of it should just go out to.
No, I could just go to the town hall and talk to Mike and look at something that was of question.
I was thinking add either you or Ron or both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think having the chair and the town administrator having access would make sense. Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we can.
I just wouldn't want it out to multiple boards.
No, 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 no.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I'm not, I'm not a fan of opening it up completely, but absolutely we can give it to a, a few people.
Okay.
Now, was there another, I think there was another question about something maybe? I don't know.
The, um.
Highway's cameras or?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's highway's cameras.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. Um, and I did print out copies of the proposal for everybody, so.
Is that in here?
Um, there's a stack underneath.
Yeah.
Can I get that?
Keeping it all for myself.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry, it's not on official proposal letterhead. It's just, had to do it quickly, so.
And so this would come from their department budget?
I'm, I'm not sure how it's, uh.
That was the other thing we need to figure out where we would get the money, but this is the beginning stage.
Yeah, I, I will say that the, um, the recording box itself, the server is not, uh, we're not meeting our legal requirement. So we do need to, if we're gonna be recording, we have to store it for at least thirty days.
Right. I thought the recorder there was thirty days.
It doesn't, I looked, it, I looked today. It doesn't.
Okay.
It doesn't maintain it long enough.
Okay.
Yeah. It tries.
Okay. It's just antiquated.
Yeah, it's just too old. Yeah.
Okay. So we'll table this for now and we'll come back to it, Brad, or how do you want to handle?
Well, actually, I'd like to make a motion that we identify a funding source and pursue phase one because we've got to do that no matter what, just to get compliant, even if we leave the current cameras in place. Right? So I, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, Ron, can you, Mike, can you take the action to, to get with the accountant and see?
In fact, I was gonna remind you all that we do have ARPA money that needs to be allocated prior to the end of the calendar year.
And it's actually a, uh, and it's actually a, uh, it's a good like filler block in terms of money. So, uh, uh, can I, let me finish that motion. Let's actually, do we want to just allocate, what, what level cameras would we want? Do we want to go middle tier two? So we've actually got, because we've had some problems in the past where we couldn't delineate what really occurred.
Well, the, the night vision is really important to me, so.
Well, all of them have night vision, but it's just the amount.
Yeah, two and three have illuminated.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean.
From, from my technical perspective, there's a pretty significant difference between tiers one and tier two.
Tier two and tier three are more subtle.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. I was thinking tier two, just because I don't think we need the Cadillac.
Right.
But I do want something that's at least as good as my Kia. Right, and I want a Yugo. Yugo would be bad.
If I may, Jacob, is there difference between tier two and three with regards to be able to say, read a license plate off of a vehicle?
Um, yeah, so you're, in order to do that, some of that is, is going to be, yeah, there would. There, yeah, um, some of it can be, but some of it, uh, I would say license plates are gonna be, if, if you catch them straight on, you'll be okay with tier two. Um, if, if it's a motion, you know, where they're driving quickly by, we would want to go to tier three. I didn't list it, but tier three is also substantially faster in terms of frames per second. So it's about double the frames per second. So we can stop and catch images much more clearly.
I think, uh, I think, you know, with using the ARPA money, I have no problem going with the tier three.
Okay.
I think if we're gonna do it, there's no sense in doing it. We, we can't read what's going on.
Yeah, and there's, um, I just want to point out, there's some AI detection features on that which are kind of nice. Um, you put a box with a name. It'll tell you, basically. Yeah, you can train it. Yeah, yeah, it's kind of neat. So.
I'm not sure. I like living in the future, to be honest with you.
I know. I know. Yeah.
So, do you want to redo your motion?
Okay, so, yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, that we allocate, what does that come out to be total? So that's, uh.
Fifty-seven fifty plus seventy-five hundred? Is that right?
Plus twenty-six, twenty-five for install.
Yeah, we have to run, uh, better cabling through the building. Right now it's just low end coax.
Hey now. So I'm gonna make a motion that we allocate sixteen thousand dollars worth of ARPA money to, uh, execute the, uh, upgrade of the highway cameras to a tier three configuration as proposed on the email.
Second, how, but how are we as far as getting other bids? So do we meet the criteria? Do we need to get?
Doesn't have to be, isn't it thirty thousand?
Well, I think anything over ten thousand, ten thousand is a limit for getting written quotes.
It's a good point. Yeah.
I was gonna say, I think we, we went over the threshold.
Yeah.
I mean, we could get queued if you want to do it in.
Break it up, but.
In different tiers.
Yeah, but I, yeah, you know what? I don't want to.
But that's deceitful, right? So.
So let's, let's put it out the quote. I mean, this gave us a ROM in order to, to set what our budget is expected, right? So we can earmark sixteen thousand, which is me rounding up from fifteen eight seventy-five, right? And then let's, let's put some quotes out there.
Can do.
So.
And if we overallocate, then we can just rescind that.
We have till the end of the year.
We can rescind that balance and put it back in DARPA.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We have till the end of the year.
Uh, so any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Actually, you know, I said that and now I'm talking myself out of a part of that.
Okay.
Which is, I think we still go out the quote for the cameras, but I actually would feel more comfortable with Jacob doing phase one and getting the server in there place for us. And that would actually still be over the ten grand to do the cameras. So, so can I provide amendment to the motion that we authorized him to do phase one and just put the second half out the bid?
Can we, can I just ask a question before you make a motion today?
Sure, absolutely.
So what, if anything, would work there, if would the, if we just replace the box that's holding the thing, if we just replace that and that is the fifty-seven fifty?
Yep.
Yep, and that includes the installation of that one.
Would that then allow us to use the cameras that are in place?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I'm proposing that.
Yeah, our, um.
So that's.
Yeah, that, that's exactly why I'm proposing that.
So then we, yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, our, our servers can handle coaxial connections and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, and that's exactly why I'm proposing it, because then we can get the cameras in service.
Will we meet their requirement?
Right.
Right?
And then, and then we can put the other half of it.
Upgrade the cameras later.
Well, we, yeah, and we can put that out the bid so that way we don't trip over the, but we also don't have the delay in starting to execute it that we have for going out the contract.
And for what it's worth, um, I, I think that makes a lot of sense because the cameras are an involved project.
Yeah.
Over there, because it's all hidden behind insulation and I have to pull it.
Okay, so, so that also, yeah, so it'll be interesting, so.
So if somebody else gets that.
Your, your heart's not, your heart's not broken, right?
Being on a ladder and this weather is not, yeah.
I gotcha, gotcha. So let's, let's, let's do that, that way, because that way we're, we get compliant quicker. We're still not tripping over the, the, the bid compliance. And because we're, we're, we are gonna still do the rest of the project quoted out, it doesn't, it doesn't smack too much in nepotism. So.
Sure. And cameras are all over the place. I'll just say, like in terms of price, you can look online and find some for a hundred dollars, eighty dollars a piece.
Yeah, but you're not gonna get, you know, fourteen, forty, whatever. Yeah, so.
So is that a motion?
That's a motion. Yeah, my motion would be that we split this up into two phases. Phase one to do the servers, phase two to be sent out to quote, to get ten cameras. And I do, I would like Jacob to work with Ron on the specs for the phase two. Um, just from a perspective of ensuring that we, uh.
Bidding apples for apples.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
And then items not reasonably anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours more in advance. Um, looking for a motion to approve and release the eight-one-twenty-four executive session minutes.
I'll make a motion to release the eight-one-twenty-four executive minutes.
Second.
Approve and release.
Approve and release, yes, sorry.
Uh, all in favor?
I'm not gonna, so we got a second with discussion, right? So I did not read those yet. So I'm not gonna partake in it. So you can either wait for me one more week or we could, you guys can take the vote, but I'm gonna abstain.
I only want to put it through because we got a lot of people looking for them.
It's your call. I haven't, so.
Alright.
If it makes you feel better, I have reviewed them as well and Karen was spot on.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.